Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Hope everyone had a nice long weekend. Oh, let's see. We'll kick right into public comment if we have any, Jessica, my normal questions I'd say to you.
If anybody has any public comment, they can raise their hand.
All right, let's move right into new business. We're gonna have a public hearing for Hi-Hop Farms Host Community Agreement now.
We have quick things here.
Okay.
It's amended.
I was gonna say, we have an agreement, so what's going on?
Hi, Trent.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, welcome. What's going on, Chris? So what's going on?
Wow, so as we're moving forward, learning a lot about the world of cannabis, as people know, last year, we got our Host Community Agreement and we got our final license to do our outdoor cultivation here in Berry. However, we got it too late in the year to actually start growing outdoors. But we are fully licensed for outdoor cultivation and plan on growing here shortly this spring. But as we continue to learn more and more about this, the opportunity has arise to pursue a manufacturing license. So what that is, the CCC definition of that, the Marijuana Product Manufacturing License allows an entity to obtain, manufacture, process, and pack its marijuana and marijuana products, to deliver marijuana and marijuana products to marijuana establishments, and to transfer marijuana and marijuana products to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. So that's what we're here for tonight. We're looking to get our Host Community Agreement amended to include this. Other than that, there's no other proposed changes to the Host Community Agreement, other than the ability to do that here and now.
All right. So are the portions of this agreement that are just amendments that we can highlight to look at? Or is this?
So basically, on the first page of the updated Host Community Agreement, you'll see about halfway down, whereas Hi-Hop Farms seeks to operate a licensed marijuana cultivation facility for the purpose of outdoor greenhouse cultivation, harvest and carry and drive, and also distribution of marijuana. The part that I added into this, in addition, Hi-Hop Farms seeks to operate a licensed marijuana product manufacturer, an entity authorized to obtain, manufacture, process, and package marijuana and marijuana products, to deliver marijuana and marijuana products to marijuana establishments, and to transfer marijuana and marijuana products to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. Added that, and then the next paragraph down, you'll see basically that last line that says, "And a marijuana product manufacturer license." And those are the changes to the, or the amendments to the Host Community Agreement.
Okay, Jessica, have you had an opportunity to compare this to the old agreement?
Yes, yeah, and the changes that were made are exactly what we need to do.
Those are Jessica.
Yeah, the only other change that we need to make is that on the last page, Matt Urban is still listed as the chair of this left board, so we'll just have to change that to Greg.
Okay, now, is there, first of all, this is obviously our first hearing. We have to have, I assume, two, correct, by our rules?
I'm not sure if you-
Matt, you recalls that what we have is we gotta have two public hearings before we can act on it?
I don't believe so. My recollection is you did not need two for this type of activity. I do believe there are other things that require two public hearings, but this doesn't fall into that, based on what I remember. Now, previously, we also had multiple meetings, but they weren't necessarily public hearings because Iandoli came before the board several times to explain his intent prior to all our bylaws and everything in place. And then the doctor there off Walnica Road similarly wanted to provide the time to explain it, but technically, they've already kind of, you know, represented who they are a few times as well, and the first one was a public. I don't think there's two public hearings required. I think it's just one public hearing required, but all the other meetings were to add more information down for the board's selectmen. That's my understanding.
Well, of course, it's, their license is the only one that's come since the bylaws have gone into effect. As I recall, this is what held us up in the beginning, is having two public hearings, and we need to have them so far apart for the initial host agreement. So I don't know if the amendment is different. I don't wanna do something wrong and trip this up, Chris, and make it cost you more time.
Yeah, that's true.
What's your time pressure on this? Is this something that has to be done very quickly, or can we take another meeting and come back to it to make sure that we don't need a second hearing and-
That's fine, we can come back to another meeting. It's not, this isn't, this isn't a pressing issue right now.
Okay, so let's then get on to the discussion of the content. I, for one, have no issues with it. This is similar to what we've done with Dean up at his facility. Obviously, it's much more profitable for them to process it some before they sell it, which of course would help our host agreement, because our host agreement is off of their, you know, wholesale end of it. So it's beneficial to the community, and it's certainly nothing that we haven't done for the other facilities. So if you guys have any other comments or questions, now would be the time.
The only one thing I would like to do is review the bylaws. I wanna make sure how we defined our local licensing. And part of that isn't so much, obviously, we're not at the point where we've exceeded any number of licenses we've set, but this actually would fall under the third outdoor cultivation, so that would max that out. I just don't recall what did or didn't get written into the different descriptions of like a manufacturer, a wholesale manufacturer, because my guess is, if we did provide a number, then we're probably maxing out on that. This isn't so much that it affects Hi-Hop Farm or this Host Community Agreement, but we may wanna look at that and find out how we may wanna approach looking at our bylaws and see if, obviously, we've had one site completely have a positive growth last year, CPC, and now we've got another one that, although they haven't really done that, they did prior, at least on this site, do the hemp, which is a very similar like neighborhood effect, if you know what I mean, when it comes to that I smell something, that I see something, whatever you wanna call it. So we're getting to the point where we're gonna have enough evidence to tell the town, this is what it is, and what are your thoughts? And maybe start looking at modifying our bylaws to see if a fourth outdoor cultivation or something may be in play. It's a side conversation, not necessarily specific to Hi-Hop, but I do think we should start entertaining the idea of how many licenses we're willing to issue, and then similarly on the planning board, they'll have to look at their own side of that.
Certainly. Dylan, anything you wanna add?
No, no further comments on this topic.
Okay, so as far as this Host Community Agreement goes, I don't hear that we have any objections to it at all, Chris. We definitely wanna look into it between here and our next meeting. And I know the bylaw for the initial Host Agreement did say we had to have two meetings, and I was initially trying to have our meetings a couple days apart, and the board agreed the intent was to have it a couple weeks apart, and that's kind of what held us up in the beginning. And I don't know if that applies to a modification or not, but we'll just be safe and get back to this in two weeks and make sure that we are hitting the timelines we have to.
I did, I did just look up the bylaw, and it does say that two public hearings are needed for a Host Community Agreement, but there's nothing that specifies any detail on an amended HCA, so I think maybe that's something that in the future needs to be clarified as well.
So to err on the side of safety, we'll post the next hearing as, the next meeting's the second public hearing, and then we could take action on it at the end of that meeting.
Go.
Let us get it signed and get it off to you for the first meeting for March. I don't know what that date would be, offhand.
March 5th.
Look at that, she's ready.
We might not be able to do it that quickly. We may have to skip it to the next meeting in order to give, just because office time to advertise for it.
Yeah, it does require, it requires two publications in the Berry Gazette, so if I can get it in for this week, I think that might work. This week and next week, and then it'll be March 5th. So if I can still get it in for this week, which I don't think so, we can do March 5th, but if I can't get it in for this week, then we'll have to do the second meeting in March.
Well, we can also do it the following week in DPW, at the commission meeting.
We can make it fit, but-
Just, I'd rather get it back in their hands sooner than later, so they're not held up like last time, because the state is not always quick with these things. You know, we're down to a couple of months, so they gotta get stuff going here, so hopefully for March 5th, we can act on it, if not, probably the week after. And you guys will be able to move forward.
That's great.
It shouldn't stop your grow either way, just, it's just a matter of come cultivation and sell time, you wanna have this established.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Go ahead, Chris.
Jessica, just a thought on that is if we end up marrying it up with the DPW, we may have to really separate in two separate Zoom calls?
Yeah, for sure.
So it doesn't fall under the DPW agenda by, you know, sometimes we just do stuff, and it's not the same now with Zoom and remote access.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's if we wind up there. If we can get it done beforehand, that'd be great, and we'll find out when we get closer to that date. Okay, Town Report dedication. Lester can't make this meeting, so I still want him to present his idea and talk about the different people he's listing and why.
I know that the deadline for the Town Report is the end of this month, and that's like a hard deadline, so he did say in his email that he, I think he said he'll make a recommendation. He said that he's going to prepare the dedication and submit them to Sandy, and that the board can review them at the same time, and maintain the confidentiality that's customarily reserved for this publication.
You guys both have seen the list of names?
I have.
Okay. What I was hoping to get from Lester was more of an explanation on each of these individuals. Yeah, I understand he's picked them for whatever reasons he sees fit. Doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, we would agree with all the selections, or, yeah, I don't understand. I mean, we typically pick one. It's not always easy to select one. I'm certain they're not against it. I just was wanting to get a little more background before we publish all these names and move forward with it.
When is the deadline? Did you say again, Jess?
The, I believe, he wanted to have everything ready to get quotes for publication at the end of this month, so whatever the last business-
Two weeks, not even.
Not even two weeks, so I think that's the 25th.
I guess there's two things to consider. As far as I understand, he's the only one to offer somebody or something for the dedication, so it's not like he's a competitor out there offering something for us. And second, if he can send something and Jessica could share it with the three of us, we could kind of make a vote that if we respond to Jessica separately, so we're not outside of open meeting, whether we agree or disagree, if two thirds of us agree, then we can kind of act on it prior to the next meeting to keep Sandy on her schedule. Or we can just make the final decision on that based on that first meeting in March. If Sandy can even just use whatever Lester sends as a basis for the quote, and obviously the quote will be less if we go with one person, I'm guessing, versus the nine people he listed, if I remember right, it was nine people.
Yes, there's nine on there. I mean-
We could also see if there was a time that Lester could make it down, and we could have another meeting, maybe next week, where we only might have on the agenda was this.
Well, I think the other thing is, you know, is this something we tend to keep close to the, tight to the vest and not let out until the book is out? Or does it really not matter if we try to keep the dedication more of a surprise to the people? I mean, do we, if people wanna know, they have the right to know, but I mean-
Historically, I recall it, Jessica, it comes up during our meetings. It's just part of the-
We approve it.
-process, so I haven't noticed historically, like, keeping it, you know, not advertising it prior to showing up on, you know, on the booklet at town meeting. So I haven't seen it really that way before.
Yeah. It's certainly unusual to do this, and it's, I mean, it's not gonna change. A publication is something, a neighborhood, what, 80 pages anyway, so it's not gonna make a huge change in cost from the printing of the book by any means. I like the sentiment behind it. I don't wanna give people the false sense that these people have all passed from COVID, and that's why it's being done. I think these are just, you know, as you said, it's an unusual year. It's been an unusual year, so why not acknowledge a greater volume of the loss this town has had for these people that have participated in the community and in the government over the years? I was just hoping to get a little more background from him before we did it, what each of the members are, but I hate to do a, I hate to do an approval off-public by notifying Jessica separately. I'd rather not, because that, it starts to look like we're hiding something, and I don't wanna do that. I don't wanna give the impression that that's what we're doing. So that's my concern, if it's something that's normally not kept quiet and there's no reason to.
It may be better, like Dylan just said, let's look at something on the last week of February that still fits within the deadlines, and try to set ourselves up with a short agenda meeting just to get through this, that helps Sandy get an accurate quote, and we can kind of close the book on this. Because I agree, Greg, we, I don't really have enough information either. It's just a complete, I completely rely on Lester on whatever he's proposing, because I don't know any more than one or two people on the list, because I just haven't been in town long enough, as some others might have.
Exactly. All right, so why don't we do that then, Jessica? If you can reach back out to Lester, see when he can meet with us some evening this week, and we'll have to get a consensus from the board if we can all make that meeting, and we'll just, you know, it's probably like a 30-minute meeting if that. And we're gonna need to, you know, we need to, obviously, time to post it. So you figure out when the last day is and when we can post it, and we'll get back to it then and just get the information we're looking for, approve the names we wanna approve, and get that list to Sandy. Everyone all right with that?
I am.
All right, so we'll just table this for now until we have a meeting with Lester. Next up is a transfer station contract with Solidway Solutions. When do we need this signed by?
Well, the start of the contract is July 1st, so see if we have time.
All right. I haven't gone through this reprinted version yet. I would assume it's, as we've discussed before, but you guys wanna go through it now, or do you wanna go through it on our own and get back to it another night?
I'd like to dig into it a little bit more, and then revisit it at the next meeting.
Okay. So once again, we'll table that, we'll put this on the agenda for the first meeting of March 5th. So homework, everyone, let's make sure we do take a time and go through it, so we can discover its meaning, if we have anything to question. So that'll be one, you know, whatever we bring up, if there's anything, we can highlight the changes, and next time, just focus on those highlights and move through with it, hopefully quickly. Well, Calm, a particular license for Twitch Nutrition, hey!
Yes.
It's about time. So this is a place up in the Calm End that has been doing the smoothies and whatnot, and they finally have their license in request for us. Look for the motion on that. We have the check.
Yep.
And make a motion that we approve the Calm and Vic Solar license requested by Twitch Nutrition.
Second motion.
Motion to second to approve the Calm and Vic license for Twitch Nutrition. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
And Gregor Sullivan, yes. And used town property, Christmas Inn at Berry. We'll just make a note that this isn't a fully completed request for use as of yet. Hasn't been gone through by the police. Normally, I'm pretty objectionable to that, but given the committee that it is, and this is an annual thing, I'm just happy they're doing it early on, and I'd have no problem approving it pending their sign-off being completed.
And make a motion that we approve the Christmas Inn Berry request to use town property pending final sign-off by Public Safety.
Second.
Motion to second to approve the Christmas Inn Berry request to use the town property with the restrictions noted. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
Gregor Sullivan, yes. Another request for town property is the Lions Club Car Show, and is this complete? We'll run through it here.
Thought it looked fairly complete, but I had one question regarding when they checked off the insurance certificate, saying they're self-insured, but they do not list the town of Berry as additionally insured.
Go ahead.
I'm not saying we have had a policy that we've really required that historically. More, I'm bringing it up as something that we should maybe start considering. When they're using town property, if they don't provide an insurance certificate that covers us as well, there's a potential that any injuries that occur can be blamed on the town for the property being not properly maintained. And so it is a risk that we've been taking. I'm not gonna sit here and say it's a risk that, it's a huge risk based on our historical use, but it's a potential risk, because as everything grows, not everybody's local that comes to it. So you never know if somebody from another town, another state, decides that they're gonna go after all parties that could potentially go after if somebody gets hurt. So we may wanna start considering when we believe the certificate of insurance with the town of Berry named as an additional insured should be required.
All right, and the only thing we don't have signed off is what, the fire department EMS? It says they have an EMS, bless you. It says it has an EMS plan, but we don't have a sign-off from EMS yet, that's all.
Yes, yeah, that was the last one that we're waiting on.
All right, so in this case, I'd say this one I would kick back. This is for when? It's not till September, so we have quite a ways. We can kick it back until they get the sign-off from EMS and provide their copy of certificate for insurance. I mean, it does note that it says in the application that the town of Berry is gonna be named in the policy. It does say within the application, so I think it's reasonable to at least look at what their insurance binder does say, and maybe they should be able to get something in the print that names of the town is indemnified during this event from, you know, from their actions. If that's even possible, I mean, I don't know to what end we can really do that, but-
You know, many times, the city of Worcester, I've just had the experience where you ask for it, in this case, the Lions Club would just go there and ensure, make a request to have an additional certificate issued that shows that the town of Berry is covered for this event under their insurance. They may have, be, they have to pay for the one time, add-on for that period, but it's because that insurance company, they'll, will do similar to what Maya does for us. And if then happens, all of a sudden, they kind of provide your legal defense. So there may be a potential adder, but I don't know what it would be. I'm not in the industry to know what that cost is.
Well, at this time, it's still an apartment, so I'd stay, we asked them to provide that and get that last sign-off and bring it back to us again. And they have submitted their fee already, or no?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll table that for now again, and spin back to it, hopefully in two weeks. I would assume they won't have a problem with the fire department's sign-off, because they usually work pretty well with some of the guys on the association, so we think they'll be able to get that done. And the insurance should be but a phone call and a fax. It shouldn't be a big deal. Department of Fish and Game, interest in acquiring property. What is that all about?
So we got a letter from the Mass Department of Fish and Game, and they're considering the purchase of land located in Berry, and there's a map that's attached that shows the property of interest. It's like a reddish color. It's about 90 plus or minus acres of wildlife habitat. The current-
The property of Flarey Road, the question thing, and about the gates, and then people who didn't grow.
Uh huh.
And so if they do acquire the land, it will be retained as open space, protected land, with public access for outdoor recreational opportunities like wildlife observation, hunting, fishing, and trapping.
So I had been approached by either members of or representatives of the East Boston Land Trust that owns the purple hashed land adjacent to this lot, and they had asked about the possibility of having the Department of Fish and Game take over this land, and it would continue to expand the conservation land around Old Reservoir and up budding their land. I was not necessarily supportive of that, and there's a couple reasons that, if you don't mind, Greg, I'd just like to put out there.
No, go ahead. I know you touched on it last time we talked about it, so.
So first of all, our experience right now with the state and various conservation departments, DCR, and all the, the access to the areas around the watershed for the Ware River, there's been questions about them locking the gates up during times when people would like to be able to drive out there in the summer in order to get somewhere where they can't walk as well. That never got resolved, because about the time that we were gonna try to get the state to answer our questions, COVID hit, and everything kind of just stopped. I have no clue where the state is on this, but I'm also not gonna be surprised if they come back and just say, this is what we're gonna do, because they weren't necessarily- Because they weren't necessarily having those meetings to get input from us, it sounded like, but just to tell us what they were going to do anyway. I have no problem as a local community setting up rules on how we would manage this land or what we would allow on this land. But I'm not necessarily a supporter of giving this land to the state and then losing our voice on how this land gets handled. We kind of have a lot of that land here in Berry and we're entering the process of creating a master plan. We're still looking to update our open space and recreation plan, and until those are done, I don't think we should be giving up our land and then going, oh, I wish we still had that land there because it would have made a difference on how we're looking at the town's future growth and where we want open space and recreation and other items, you know, for all I know, at some point, that may be an area that would be a place where the water department would want a new well and a tank because it's high ground and it could help distribute everything else over there. I mean, now we're talking years in the future maybe, but it may be an area where whether it's along Williamsville or off, you know, Flaherty, running the water lines out to areas where maybe future growth means it's not all going to end up farmland. Maybe we get a small stretch of some with this new NRPC zoning that the planning board is putting out there. A lot of R80 may actually have the ability to have small clusters of homes. And so if you're going to do that and then get rid of what could be kind of a lone town land up there, you make it more difficult for us to determine how we would expand our infrastructure to help with that type of growth. So I just think it's premature to give that land up until we have a better look at, more of a holistic look of how that could affect the town.
Where exactly, if you know, does that, because I can't see Flaherty Road on here. Where does that house with the gate on it fall on this, on this road? I mean, I don't see any private property highlighted in this list, and there's two or three houses down that road that aren't even highlighted here, so I don't know how accurate this map can be without that listed.
I believe if you look, so you look at our red plot and you see the right angle in the bottom right corner, kind of.
Yeah.
The Flaherty Road is running that property and then it's the line that kind of runs right up through the topographical marks.
So it's just overshadowed by that red, but the thing is, is we know.
I think where that little corner is, is where the private property is, that it's not highlighted.
But it should be highlighted as private property then, that's my point, it's, the private properties are not all highlighted here. Unless they're only listing, listing unimproved private property. You know what I'm saying?
I completely agree, because where they list private isn't speaking to any of the private around the land we're speaking of.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure where they got their information to identify what's private and what's not.
So I'm assuming their private is only listing open land, unused or undeveloped land that's private. But it certainly doesn't give an accurate depiction of the properties because there are down by the lake, there are camps down there as well that are listed, so it doesn't give a very good overview of what's actually going on down here. And where they'd be acquiring this land from, Jessica?
It's currently, well, yeah, that was my question because it does say in the letter that there would be a fee that they would pay on the, you know, remaining real estate taxes of the property, so it makes me believe that it could be private property. But there's.
My guess is they're going to take it as if it's undeveloped conservation land and pay you a tax rate as if it was conservation land on private. So how will the assessor identify the tax rate on that type of land for a private owner?
Yeah.
And they're only going to offer it for one fiscal year, not year after year after year. So it looks like it's a one-time payment approximately one year's worth of taxes on your lowest tax rated properties in town.
Right.
So we might get, I don't know, a thousand, two thousand bucks, maybe three thousand, and that's it, and then we're giving up ninety acres for that.
Right.
I can have the assessor, and this is something I wanted to look into when we got the letter the other day, is have the assessor nail down the map and lot number on this and get more details on whether it's private or who owns the property.
Well, outside of those things to look into, I agree with Selectman Urban that this, you know, we've had bad luck dealing with them with the other lands in town. Their interest in closing off areas for watershed and such, they have no regard for our use and our citizens' use and the tourist street brings us in use of these lands. So I'm not inclined to give up anymore to them, I don't see any benefit to the town in them acquiring this land. I don't see, there's nothing in here, you know, the old acumen is whiff him, what's in it for me? It doesn't demonstrate anything in it for us but a loss of taxes. So I'm not in support of it.
I mean, it may fall into some of the state revenues we get for all of our state-owned open space, which is, I think, also miniscule per acre compared to any other type of revenue we would get. But when I add it all up, I just think it's, it's really, we just don't know the big picture. You know, we've got to look at the long-term plan for Berry and things like that before we just say, sure, state, you can have this, and then we realize that that was just a mistake and now we're just, we're stuck again.
Or even worse yet, they decide to put a gate on it and charge people to come in to visit it. I mean, money going to them, not us. I'd recommend we either just, either table it or we officially vote it down. What's your favor, gentlemen?
Do we want to get input from the planning board, conservation committee, et cetera, for this before we take the plunge one way or the other? Because if this might fit into the long-term vision of the, of the plan, then maybe we should take that time to see how these things fit, work with each other, otherwise.
If we were considering picking, letting them buy the land or something, then yeah, I'd want to see what conservation thinks of it. But I'm skeptical of letting someone else have another piece of land around that body of water. Our residents have very limited access to it as-is, and this is one of the few ways they can actually get in is out Flaherty Road to that other land in the back. And frankly, I don't trust them after what they did with, you know, the property is down off of 122. I just don't trust them right now, it's as simple as that, and I've got no interest in moving forward and letting them take more land in town. Historically, it's been bad business for us.
And the only other reason I would maybe suggest that asking the planning board or conservation commission right now about it is there is no plan in place. The planning board is just now starting about, talking about developing a master plan and that eventually get approved by the town, not by the planning board. So I think it's better to keep this resource and decide what to do with it as a, as a town rather than sell it off as a board of selectmen.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Somebody want to make a motion, or do you want to just table it?
I would make a motion that we respond that the town is not interested in selling this property at this time.
That a motion?
Yeah, that would be my motion.
Okay, I second that motion.
All right, so a motion is second to notify Fish and Game that we're not interested in letting them acquire the property at this time? Any further discussion on that? Hearing that, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
No, Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Next is snow and ice deficit spending, but at that time of year, what do we have for requests for overspending? Has it been looked at by the finance committee yet? What do we have going on?
No, this actually just came in a couple of days ago, right before I sent out the agenda from Jean. She says that the snow removal budget is currently overextended by nineteen thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. So the board of selectmen is the first one considering this.
We've done this, you know, every year we do this, it's so people understand, it's the one budget in town you intentionally deficit fund. You don't want to overfund it, we don't want to overtax. So you make an estimate, usually a little on the low side, so when the actual numbers come in, you pay the actual amount by the end of the year for the snow and ice. But we did, I believe, last year, is we took a guess at what would cover us through the rest of the year, which is very difficult to do at this time. I don't like that we're negative already, this should have come to us before it went negative. But once again, it can be deficit funded, it's expected to go behind, but we'd like to typically keep up with it before it goes behind. Have they given any projections on what they might use? I mean, have they just restocked the piles, are we, any idea?
I haven't heard any, anything, I don't know if Jean, I know that Jean, oh, she's raising her hand. I don't know if she's heard anything from Jason on this.
Okay, want to bring Jean into the meeting, please?
Yep, she's in.
Jean, welcome.
Hi.
So what do we have here?
The only thing that's over right now is the payroll part, which we don't always know ahead of time until it hits the payroll. So that's the part that's over right now. I think there's still like thirty-five thousand left in the expense side of it.
Okay.
At the end of February, so you might want to consider giving approval for that too. That's where we are right now. I did email, I emailed Jessica this last week, I also emailed Jason. So I was hoping that he would get in touch with you guys or Jessica or something, but I haven't heard from them either, so.
All right, so in other words, payroll is going over because all these things are hitting us in the overnight and off-business hours, they're not coming during daytime hours, so we're hitting the overtime pretty heavy.
It's the overtime, so, I mean, we wouldn't know that until it hits the payroll, so.
Right, and it's, what is it, nineteen thousand we said right now?
I think it, nineteen thousand, yeah.
And you're sure we're going to have more?
Yeah.
And if we still have money left in the, in the material side of it, is that including the current expenditure warrant, because I know we just had a couple bills for salt come in?
I'm looking at that right now.
Yeah, it includes last week's warrant.
Okay.
Which is the most current warrant.
We have a balance right now for the materials. And as Jean said, based on the date this information was available, of about thirty-eight thousand. That's starting at a hundred and five thousand, so we've used about sixty-four percent of that line item. And for the labor, the overtime, we're, we've spent forty-three thousand with the original budget of about twenty-four thousand.
Okay.
Which is not inconsistent because of mass regulations on how you fund these.
Right, and we can't control when they come in.
But once you set a budget line item, if I'm correct, Jean, you can't ever go down in the future?
Exactly, you have to, you have to appropriate the same amount of money every single year for snow and ice deficit spending.
Okay.
So if we raise this to like forty thousand one year and then we didn't use it, we just locked up operational money for a year that we didn't need to.
Right. If we still have thirty-five thousand, I mean, realistically, this, this.
For materials.
Right, for materials, the treatment starts really in November, we start to get the icing on the roads and the dustings and things. So we've gotten through November, December, January, and half of February, we realistically have a month and a half, maybe two months left, so I don't want to jump on approving any overtures of materials yet till that dwindles down and we think we might need to. But if we've already used up forty thousand in labor, we're likely to go to sixty, so maybe we need to approve an additional thirty-something at this point to try to get through, so we're not doing this multiple times.
Are you suggesting you want to get to a total of sixty thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be an approval of about thirty-seven thousand?
Thirty-seven, thirty-six.
That'll eat up the nineteen thousand and then give us.
Another eighteen.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's reasonable, you know, depending what we get, you know, February is usually our worst month, I think, for multiple storms and icings and things. March, you're either going to get, it's going to warm up and rain, or we get some snow, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to usually hit us as often as it does in February. In February, certainly is held true to it's, it's cold and often hitting storms, we got more coming end of this week again. But I think that's a reasonable shot.
Just round it off to an even forty thousand? It gives them another twenty-one thousand, doesn't mean they'll even use it. But this is just a, this doesn't really affect the budget, it doesn't affect free cash, it's just us trying and ask the DPW not to do more than they have to.
Right.
It's kind of an odd process, but.
Jean, what do you think, that sound reasonable if we approve forty for that?
Were you asking Dylan?
Jean.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
All right, does the forty thousand for now sound reasonable, that'll leave us twenty thousand more for.
That's fine.
Okay, I look for a motion then?
I make a motion that we approve deficit, deficit spending for a total of forty thousand, which would include the current deficit of nineteen thousand four fifty-three forty-nine.
All right, I'll second that, I have a motion to second to approve deficit spending of forty thousand dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes, it looks like Dylan's video feed froze.
Could be. Well, Greg O'Sullivan is yes, we'll give Dylan about ten more seconds and see if he wants to respond. Seeing as these froze, we'll accept this as a two and oh vote to approve that deficit spending. Personnel committee's discussion on FY22 proposed hours for accountant and assistant accountant. What do we have on this, Jessica?
So we recently discussed with the finance committee, the town accountant, Jean, who is here very timely. She is requesting an increase in her hours and her assistant hours, and this is something that has to come in front of the select board to consider. So currently, Jean is working thirty hours a week, that's what's budgeted, and she's increasing, she's requesting an increase of thirty-five hours per week. And I can let her explain a little bit more on that request, and the assistant town accountant, Jean's requesting an increase from five hours per week to ten hours per week.
Okay, Jean, what say you again?
Well, a lot of stuff that's wrong in my office, a lot of stuff that didn't get done because of COVID. And I'm still doing reports for COVID too, so one of the things was on the, the auditor's management report for the last few years was to get the fixed assets computerized in-house. We do have the software for that, but with everything going on, we haven't had time to do that yet. So I know it's going to take a lot, it's going to take some time to do it.
Now, you've been working in-office now, Jean, you're still mostly from home?
Both, actually, I've been trying, I've been there, I've been trying to come in at least on Wednesdays and Thursdays, and I'm usually there on Friday.
Okay, and I assume the assistant hour will increase also for helping with data entry with this?
Yeah, yeah. I also, it also, a lot of this depends too on what you're gonna do about the software, because I'm gonna need a lot of extra time for gonna do that.
Gonna do what software, you mean the changing systems?
Yeah, if you're gonna change the systems.
We haven't-
I have in here the, I also offered to both collectors turnovers into the system myself, into my system, which also I could use my assistant to do, which isn't going to be a lot of time, but it will be more time added to what I'm doing now, so.
We last discussed the software changeover a couple of months ago, and we haven't touched upon it. What, what has transpired between yourself and the administrator and Alex for discussions about that? Because after talking with you, I got the impression it really wasn't necessary to make that switch over. And I didn't know, I haven't heard from everybody else, and this is a perfect time to go ahead and address that for all here.
Well, I've already talked to you guys about it, but I really, really am against it, totally against it, even more so now, because of a few issues that have come up. I just don't like the sense of false security of having everybody on the same software and having everybody on separate software. Right now, it's bringing a lot of things to my attention that's going on in the treasurer collector's office. So, I would strongly recommend that at least at this time, not to go ahead with anything to do with changing software.
Okay, Jessica, what say you?
So I also, I have Alex here, too, if we want to bring him in.
Well, I'll let you have an input first, then we'll get to Alex next, please.
Sure, so I think, you know, I've really tried to see both sides of the situation because I am not in those offices every day. I don't, you know, understand the inner workings of these softwares. I, but from recommendations from Andrew and Sharon and the interim treasurer, and also Heather, who was here as the interim before me, I mean, they've all expressed the need to have everybody on one software for purposes of, you know, having everything uploaded into one software and having every office communicate through those softwares. And so that's just through the past couple of years, what they've documented and seen as a need for the, for the town. And so I, you know, generally would like to entertain that. I think there's also, you know, a cost savings to having one software. I know that Alex had it priced out, and it was, you know, a couple thousand dollars of savings for the software, you know, having one. And it's not something that would happen overnight, and I don't think it would even happen at the beginning of this next fiscal year. I think it's something that, you know, will take a long time to implement and to get everybody comfortable with. But I do think to address some of the things that have been brought up in previous audits, you know, having one software would work best.
I'd look for something a little more substantive to that, other than, you know, Andrew wanted to have it all on one, basically the whole town, except for the accounting office, is on one software, and it does help all those other departments communicate their monies and their funds up with the treasurer. But the final accounting of these funds is, is in the accountant's office. And I, I see a benefit to making sure that these numbers are transferred in manually. We're not talking about thousands of entries, we're talking about a dozen or so. And my, my concern for having the ability for these things to populate themselves into the accountant's software is dangerous, because if a mistake is made, can get pushed right through the accounting side without somebody laying their eyes on it again. And that's what I'm hearing from Jean, her concern is, and what she's seeing. And I'm not hearing anything substantive on what you've said or the arguments that you've parroted from the, the former treasurer and assistants down there as to why they want it, other than they want it. And I would rather see something more substantial than reasoning. I have very good rationale from Jean as to why she's opposed to it. And I'm not hearing any solid rationale that is, to me, has any traction in favor of it. Matt and Dylan, I'd like you to comment now before we go to Alex, if you like, to what we have so far.
Go ahead, Dylan, I'll wait.
Well, I don't have the comment as much as if there is, if we haven't come to an agreement about this, we should probably learn a little bit more about the arguments of, of why we should or why we should not switch or not switch to a different software system, because it is an important decision. So I, I think I would like to learn a little bit more about why some folks think we should use it as opposed to the reasons why Jean says that we should not.
Matt?
Jessica? Have you reached out to Softrite and Vadar?
I have reached out to Softrite, and I didn't have any success in getting response. And then, you know, like I said, we have gotten quotes from Vadar on what it would cost to implement a software on both sides, or into the accounting office.
So from your experience, Vadar was more responsive?
Correct.
Secondly, I don't necessarily agree with manually inputting into a new software is actually good for the town. And the reason is, is it leads to more potential transposition errors and other errors in the inputting. It's just as easy to have it already input, and then take a hard copy printout and compare them and check them off as you go. You don't have to type them in yourself to verify that the numbers match what you're looking for. So you're actually reducing the chance for errors when you use the same software versus two different softwares. Thirdly, the assessors' office also uses Vadar. And so, I do see a benefit for all three departments that primarily use Vadar to be on one software, I should rephrase that, that would be using Vadar. Right now, two of the three are using Vadar, one's using Softrite. This has been brought up from not only internal people, this was brought up when Nancy was the treasurer, this was brought up when Andrew was the town administrator and Sharon was the treasurer, this was brought up when Dee, as the paid consultant filling in as the interim treasurer, raised it up. And in that regard, I would at least say it was some level of a third-party review, not just internal people that have built personal relationships. The opposite of that conversation, Greg, is the only one that hasn't said it's a good idea is the accountant. And I'm not saying, I'm not trying to, not belittling what you said, Jean, please don't take it that way. I'm just trying to look at how I weigh my evidence, and I'm getting a lot more from many more people on one side of the argument than the other side. So for me, I don't find a benefit for a town that's looking for efficiency because we don't have a lot of money to maintain two separate softwares. Because it, it adds to the manual input, it adds to the time commitment and necessary effort, and it leads to potential mistakes. So, that's what I think. Everything on Vadar, the positive of that is you reduce the chance of mistakes, and you reduce the overhead, you reduce the cost of work.
Alright, Jean, do you want to take a minute to respond to anything else that's been said before we move to Alex?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I do. Number one, the assessors are not on Vadar, they are, they are on Vision, and they are bridge to Vadar just so they can print the bills, so they are not on Vadar. Any software you have, you're going to have to manually input into it. The problem I'm seeing right now is that I'm not getting information even to, they're not even inputting it, they're not even inputting it. The other thing is that it doesn't, if, if you're gonna have one person putting in all, you know, in, there's the whole checks and balances. Stuff's gonna be inputted that I'm not gonna see right now, stuff gets inputted and I see it before I even post it to my system. I am not gonna allow anybody to post something to my system that's gonna run through my whole system without me knowing about it, not me checking it, that's what checks and balances are all about. I don't, I don't know what to say to you guys, but I can tell you that all the people that you're telling me that say that we should do this, none of them are town accountants. You know, you're just relying on, they're all treasurers or town administrators, or, or, you guys are all select, and none of you are town accountants either. I just, I just see this as being a false sense of security that you think that's gonna, you know, eliminate mistakes and whatnot, and I don't think that's gonna happen. I think it's gonna make it worse.
Okay. Thank you, Jean, and for the record, I agree with you, Jean, I am, I am in favor of keeping it as it is. You know, we are letting the assessor do exactly that and just transfer their data to the different system. You know, the manual input of this isn't, you know, the initial thought when this came to us was that, you know, all these transactions, thousands, had to be really translated back, and that's not the case. We understand it's just the major accounts, so it's not a lot of numbers that have to be put back in. And my opinion is, you know, I want my accountant to have the software for what works for my accountant. And I want my treasurer to have the software that works for my treasurer. I don't want to have my treasurer be told, well, the accountant wants you to use this, so you're gonna use it. I want the treasurer to what works, do what works for the treasurer, and the accountant to do what works for the accountant. But that being said, we haven't heard from Alex at this point. I'm still not hearing any substantive reason for any real risk to have, you know, it manually entered into the Softrite as opposed to, you know, populate by itself. I don't, I don't see or hear anything yet that gives me any concern that there's a, a risk in doing it that way. So I, again, I'd like to hear from Alex and see what he has to say.
Hello?
Hello, Alex, welcome.
So with that last part, with the accountant using the accountant's software and the treasurer using the treasurer's software, my office is being, is having to use the county's software. And that's what my office, I don't think, should be doing when we're entering it all in. We are entering it twice, you are handing off work to one person and then to the other person in the office and entering it twice, which I think does leave room for error. With the security reason, if you're talking about the past experience of those issues, that, that had nothing, that theft had nothing to do with the software. That was somebody just pocketing money. So if that, if that's a concern with securities in that area, I don't think that has had anything to do with anybody's software. As with the actual product, what happens is one of my employees will enter the, enter the payment in that is received, directly hits those accounts. That gets put into what's called the batch. That batch can only be released by one person. So Jean would absolutely have the ability to review all that, nothing would be able to be entered in without her know. Everything is put down by a batch and kept on record. That batch cannot be posted until it is released. So nobody has the ability to just go enter in any payments or anything like that without being seen. With that also being said, it also opens up other areas of accounting areas that we can do with, adding to the GL to the collection side. Where, where if you enter a payment in, and you put it towards, we'll say, real estate, that automatically hits that revenue account. You could, there should be, when you match up revenue accounts at the end, there should be nothing, nothing that's off. And it's off, if it is off, that's only because the GL count was changed, and the GL count is not correct. That is something that we would have Vadar come in, you would put all together with the part of the setup and process. What it also would open up for us is a test system, and this isn't anything extra. So when you are training somebody, a whole separate program opens up where you're allowed to enter in anything that you want, and it's a whole test program. Nothing, nothing sticks, nothing does anything, it's a whole separate program. And it allows people to train and learn and operate differently on the system, and you learn more off the system. Having it not on this side or together, we are unable to do that at the time. But yeah, I, I think, I think reconciling, I think that's a huge thing that we are missing right now. We haven't pulled back the order to listen. And I think that will help. And if, if, you know, I'll put it right now, I have been down a huge part of my office recently. And if we did have both these connected right now, this would not be an issue.
Alex, you said that you are entering things now manually into the second system. Is that something you can, can you do a printout instead and allow Jean to enter those things herself? So she could have-
What she would have to do is, I mean, all the accounts, I mean, if she runs everything that we enter in, they take it all up there. I mean, that's fine, she knows, she would know the accounts better than who's entering it, she would absolutely know.
Does that, does that help?
They're all the payment reversal, so say something, something did get posted incorrectly. Say that a customer came in and, you know, they paid their XI bill for 2020, but they wanted it to go to their real estate bill, they made the wrong thing. And my office, we can accommodate that, we could go ahead and do a payment reversal with the correct corresponding information that they give us. You know, there's certain checks right there where I would actually see the cash check. You have, you have to make sure the accounts are safe, there are other things on that. So when we do that payment reversal, anything that's printed up, that would automatically be put, taken out of one GL account, or the XI, would automatically be put into the real estate. I mean, handing out that work, it would be more, I mean, I know it would be more. And I think that's something, that's something that would not be there, as opposed to her just reviewing the batch.
Jean, let me have-
Information that would be entered in, she could just review the batches.
Right, let me have Jean's comment with this at the same time. We're getting down to some of the nitty-gritty I want to talk about. Jean, are you okay with taking that, that information doing yourself? Or you think that is gonna be too time-consuming?
I can take it and do it myself, absolutely. The problem is, I haven't even been getting them, so, I mean, I haven't even, I just got January's a couple weeks ago, and I haven't even gotten anything for February yet. So, you know, all the, all the software in the world is not gonna work if you're not, if you're not posting the information into the system, period.
But it's posted, it is posted, every, every time we take a payment, it's posted right away. It's just these sheets.
And so what, so you print out the sheets and you give them to me, I don't know what the big deal is.
Right now, we're currently not doing that, where Jeanne needs to enter it all, all of it.
No, I, I said I'll enter them. If that's a big problem down there for Jeanne to enter those sheets into Softrite, I said I would do it.
It's not so much that it's a problem, it would just be streamlining the entire process.
Where you could just-
Unnecessary effort.
Well, why don't we, for an interim, I would, I would propose that for now, we give those sheets to Jeanne and let her enter them. And we'll see if this moves out on the issues for now till we can get a little further into this. I understand, it, it sounds like there's other benefits to the software that Alex is looking for, for generating, whether they're balancing-
You realize, Greg, you just cut out Jeanne's job. A significant portion of her job you just took from her and gave to Jeanne.
That's not supposed to be a significant portion of a job, man, if we change software, that portion of the job is gone. That's the point. If we change the software, then there's no need to be entered.
You're not changing the software and you're doing it anyway.
I'm saying if we change the software, like they're proposing, then that stuff is populated through automatically. Right now, what Jean is doing right now mostly is payroll. And, and with, you know, we've already talked about, we're gonna look into other things to fill time for her as the next year comes, and we have things we've discussed lightly about that. But I'm, I'm not, you know, we funded Jeanne's position, and her, her job is secure right now. We're not taking her job away. But I'm saying if we let those be processed, if it's, if Alex is saying this is what's bogging down on Jeanne, let's, let's let Jean post these papers, take them, let her enter them, see if it does change anything. And if it doesn't go as smoothly as Jean- And if it doesn't go as smoothly as Jean thinks it might, that's just something else in, in favor of software later.
So, so if I could speak real-
Sure.
So the, the big problem with just doing that is now how do we clear out Vadar and what's being entered into Vadar? So you put the batch into Vadar, that gives you a, a report. Somebody still has to monitor of what's being printed up out of Vadar. Now, that, that still needs to be done, this would, this, this would all be done in one process. You can easily match what's Vadar with the GL. Matching those two is very, very easy. Right now, the two offices are not matching the GL to the collections. And it, it, that process right there is, is not as easy and smooth as it should be. It wasn't, it, that's not just anything new either, from what I, from my understanding.
That's because, that's because Vadar doesn't have a report that's, that's readable to, to reconcile anything. That's the problem with Vadar, they don't have, they don't have decent reports.
Hey, I, that's something that I did bring up, reports that we could all obviously look at, I don't think that is the truth completely. I think also when you combine both the systems, you have a new access to all of their reports. Currently, right now, we are using the base model of Vadar that they made for us. This isn't even something they offered to customers. This was specifically made, a base model, with, with leaving a lot of the actual software out. A lot of the software is just missing with, with the whole testing environment, with matching the GL, writing the reports, I mean, a lot of it is missing. Usually when you enter the system, like I said, it goes through that batch area and that batch needs to be approved. Right now, because the two sides aren't matched, there is no approval of the batches, you can clear them, but it's, it's not significant.
Well, I don't understand, how, how often are you pushing these batches up to, to Jean? It sounds like they're, they're over a month apart. And why, if, if it's as simple as generating a batch report and handing her the documents to let her enter them, why can't that be done on a more timely basis?
Okay, as asked for that, we are only speaking of the last past month, month or two, and that is because I've been down a very crucial part of my office.
Okay, fair, fair enough.
Mary did leave, so I'm specific just the last two months when saying that. As of prior, it was not that, it was not the case. It was definitely done a lot more on, announced than that. This was also, you know, before too, so they had to take my office, catch up, handle the HR and that sort. A key part is missing, so I do not think we can base up the last two months in that aspect.
And, and given, given that exact, you know, circumstance, you've been shorthanded and you have the backlog, wouldn't it make all the more sense that since, you know, a, a software shift isn't gonna happen now, instantly, wouldn't it make more sense to pass these documents to Jean, take some of the burden off your office and let her process them and see what happens?
The only, the only issue is, is how do they post it and clear it out of Vadar without me matching it?
Okay, Matt, go ahead.
You do recall before we got into this discussion, Jean was already talking about needing more hours to accomplish her current workload? So moving stuff from the treasurer's office to her office to accomplish is not going to help with the fact that she doesn't have enough time to do what she's doing?
Yeah, and I believe part of that is, or most of that also in her case, is because COVID has her out of the office and has extra reports and things she has to keep track of for the, for the COVID tracking between CARES Act and the CARES money and the COVID expenditures. And, you know, I would, I would assume that, it, it sounds like to me, she's talking about the entry of these documents as being sort of like an hour or so of her time, not many, many hours, is that correct, Jean?
Yeah, if they come, if they come in weekly like they used to, then it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be anything, it wouldn't be much of anything. But can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, you're talking about the software and you're talking about connecting the collector's side with the general ledger. What are we doing, what would we be doing about the cash side? In the treasurer's office?
What do you do now?
Yeah, if nothing were changed.
Well, then we have a really big problem because, and I wouldn't even know about this if I didn't have, if you weren't on something separate. It's not, I can see you haven't balanced cash since October.
Now, now you're talking about a cash book with an Excel spreadsheet.
I'm trying to do the sheets.
Yes, okay, that's completely separate. Now, if we were both on the same system, you would easily be able to see all of that.
You just told me that you weren't gonna change that, you said you're gonna, you weren't gonna change what you're doing for cash.
No, I did not bring up, I did, oh, I thought you actually meant receiving the actual cash into the office.
No, I said, what were you, what were you gonna use for cash side, the treasurer's side?
Correct, so you, okay, no, what you meant cash, I thought you meant receiving ca, my office, receiving cash at the office. Now, what happens with the, the, looking at softwares, they all also goes into what's called the cash account, in, inside the software. So you actually see what hits the actual cash accounts. So if you have a certain revenue from the fire or some, something like our, you know, a certain bank account for UtaBank, we'll say, as soon as a UtaBank entry gets put in, it does link right up.
Yes, and we already have Softwrite's cash side if, if anybody wants to know about that. Because we used to have Softwrite for the treasurer and the, and the GL when Nancy was here.
Totally, my concern is this, Greg. If you ever wanna audit something, the more software you're auditing through, the more chance something slips through and someone doesn't know what's going on. So if you have a soft write and you have a Vadar and someone wants to come in and figure out what happened to the accounting, and I don't mean the accounting, I just mean in general, speaking of accounting and the treasurer's side has a role and the accountant has a role, you now have to pay someone to come in and look through both separate softwares, track maybe the Google Sheets, track the hard copies that went between so they can finally figure out how we got where we are. But if you put it all on one software, you got one place to start and you can backtrack from there. If I'm correct, Alex, Vadar identifies every input by the user that made the input.
Correct.
If you wanted to audit it, someone that knows the software, that third party you pay, they're gonna come in and they're gonna say, on this day Alex did this, or on this day Mary did this, or on this day Jean did this, and this is where all of a sudden we got off track. Not to say anybody was, you know, made a mistake or intentionally, it, it's just how do you find the source and then how do you get back to where you need to be? It's so much easier when you got one software, if you keep using two, it's, you got too much, what I would call media, whether it's a, a printout or a spreadsheet, that has to be your interface, that isn't necessarily a living doc. So are you looking for a May's edition of that spreadsheet, or are you looking for October? Or are you gonna look through 12 months of spreadsheets to figure out the answers?
Well, if I'm hearing the concerns right, Matt, it would sound like exactly what Alex has talked about. If somebody came in and paid a tax and was entered to the wrong account, if these things populated through the general ledgers automatically and they backed it off out of the one account and to put it in the other account, they're gonna be making changes to the general ledger without attention being brought to the accountant that it's being done.
No, no, you're going to present a batch that is requesting someone else to review that batch before it happens. So it doesn't automatically happen, it sends something to Jean saying, here's something for you to check. Once you verify it's right, it approved and then it automatically is the general ledger.
But they can give me the sheet that tells me that too, because it's, it's spitting out batches and I can put it, and I can put it-
You don't have the hard copy to go with it, but the problem is, as Alex had mentioned, because your, the accountant's side isn't on Vadar, Vadar's incomplete and it can't spit out the complete reports.
As of right now, somebody could actually make a change to that and Jean wouldn't be aware. Which is worse, which actually is worse. If they're both of the same, somebody could not make, make a change without Jean being aware, right now they can't.
But the change would only be on the treasurer's side until the batch is posted. Once the batch is posted, she'll have the numbers that exist. And if you make a change, it's gonna show up in your next, next batch, is it not?
That's the thing with the batches right now, they don't, they don't clear as they should be, they're not, they're not all there and clear.
Why?
You could, it, it, it's, it's not, it's not there, there, that security isn't there between them.
That's how it should work, Greg, if you're all on Vadar, but if you're not all on Vadar, that security is not in, in existence right now.
But I don't understand how they can make a change.
Because there's no accountant in the system to say, don't. There's no approval from another department to say, I have verified this, you can now release that batch. So it just sits there in perpetuity until maybe Alex or someone else has to go in to kind of override it to get it into the general ledger. So their, their Vadar system continues to work.
What I'm saying is if somebody's came in and put $2,000 down and get posted to their excise tax as opposed, you know, as opposed to the real estate tax, and that was posted and given in a batch to the accountant and that made the general ledgers. If the adjustment's gonna be made the following month, then the treasurer is going to take a check from the excise and pay it to the account for the real estate tax. So when the next batch goes through, it's gonna show a 2,000 deficit on excise and a 2,000 increase in property. And when those batches post, that's when the accountant would make the changes. But I, I don't, I don't see how it'll be missed, I just see as the other way around, as soon as they make that change, it's gonna flop the accountant's books without her seeing it. It's gonna populate through and her books are gonna get flipped 2,000 down and one and 2,000 up in the other account without her necessarily having an explanation as to why. That's, that's what I understand she's saying, the problem is, Jean, am I saying that right?
Yes.
Here's how it gets missed. It doesn't get missed forever. But Jean, you just mentioned you haven't seen these monthly updates for the last couple of months.
No, it's not like, Greg.
So, and I'm just putting that out, so what happens is, maybe the treasurer's department did something in December that they shouldn't have, a mistake, or maybe we got like what has happened in the past and we actually had someone trying to do something bad. Well, the one that was trying to do something bad never shows up in software anyway. They collect cash, put it in their pocket and they walk out the door and nobody knows that happened. So that's not where that happened, that, that'll never, no software will fix that. But when it comes to balancing your books, if Jean's not getting a written report, and this is not a knock, because I agree with you, Alex, loss of manpower has kind of put you in a hole, you're digging out of it. But I'm just saying that in that instance, when that happens, maybe it's a month, two months before Jean gets her update. And now she goes and now she's gotta spend five or six hours versus like she was saying, if she got it on a weekly basis, it's like maybe a, an hour, hour and a half a week, digging through that and then she finds an error. But now that error is two months old. And while she's trying to figure that out, Alex sends her a new report for February. But that report is false because Jean's still trying to figure out why the previous report was false. And so now you're chasing your tail. That's how it gets missed.
Right, and, and this is why if these batches are printed out every, every week or two weeks and the batch report's handed to Jean, it doesn't get missed. It's only when we're waiting on the batch reports to come out of the treasurer's office and they're not getting done in a timely manner. And this is the same issue-
It's still just an inefficient use of time though. We, the information would have already been inputted. What, what you're asking, whether it's somebody in the treasurer's department accessing a soft write and putting it in, or as you suggested, maybe just give it to the accountant and she puts it in, this is hand inputting something that was already hand input into Vadar. You're asking two different people to type in a set of numbers twice and it is not providing additional security. It just opens you up for mistakes and errors, because you're assuming both people will perfectly type in the same number both times. And if they don't, now one or the other has to figure out who put in the wrong number. And now we're wasting time, trying to figure out who put in the wrong number. It's just inefficient is my only point. I've got nothing more to say, I appreciate the, the time.
I don't think, I don't think, getting any closer to solving this right now, but I, I would-
Greg-
Yep?
Greg, I just have to say, you know, I, I've been there for a while and I was on, on, the, ladies currently with Nancy and we didn't have any trouble at all. And, and Jeanne was posting them in and we were balancing, so I don't, you know, I don't know why this is such a big issue all of a sudden now. I also wanna say that, you know, when it comes to the DOL, my records are the records of the town. If I don't have confidence in my software, then we have a really big problem. So.
All right, thank you, I'm, what I would like to do, and, and I would like you guys to agree with this for now, but because there was a backlog with, with Jeanne and with the, with the accountant, or the collective treasurer office in general, because we had that position empty for so long, I would like to hand these batch reports for the time being to Jean and let her enter them. Especially if we're gonna consider approving some more hours anyways, these entries shouldn't take her that long and see if we can get back on schedule. And if this does straighten things out, we don't have to have any further discussions on it. You know, if the issues persist, then certainly we can spin back and look at this again. But I, I would like to, for the immediate time being, before we make any other decisions, I'd like to go ahead and give Jean the opportunity to enter these things herself, and this is not re-entering. The initial entries are, are the independent collections as they come in, whatever means they have come in. The batch reports are being entered right now. And so right now, they're being entered by, by the collector, treasurer, collector office. Instead, we'll let those be entered in the accountant's office. That batch report is generated by Vadar and that, that batch report can be entered in, in either office.
That's, that's incorrect, Greg, because what you're missing is the original input to Vadar to create that batch report.
Right, that's already there, that's not gonna change. That, that input's not gonna change, it's input and it's done. And then we generate a batch report from that input. The batch report is what's being-
We're gonna do another software.
The, the batch report right now is being entered by the collective treasurer's office and I say let's, let the accountant enter that for now. We've never had a problem, the last several years, we haven't had any problem balancing our books since we initially addressed- Matt, since-
Amen, Greg.
I know, we had issues in the beginning.
I've stuck with Nancy and Jean for weeks and months because we had issues balancing our books.
Right, and at the end of-
Balancing, balancing cash, Matt, balancing cash.
But, but before the end of my first year, Matt, which would be the end of your second year, before that year end, we, we've had this straightened out. And we've had our books certified and, and kept up in a, in a timely manner since then. So what we've been doing in the last two to three years, since we, we've helped them work through these issues that existed when we came into office, we've helped them work through those issues.
State deadlines, that wasn't necessarily the week in, week out, month in, month out.
It's gotten better over the years and you know that.
Three deadlines, and that was the emergency that brought us into that discussion.
Right.
It was because of the day-to-day, week-to-week efforts that led to that issue.
But since that issue's been addressed and since we've had our, our books done and certified and ready on, in a timely manner, we haven't had any issues between treasurer and accountant for a couple of years now. We, we've had these interim positions and, and our, and our last treasurer saying they'd like to see the software propagate through so they don't have to enter the data. And the solution is, well, it's been working that way, just let the accountant enter the data for now. That's all for now, let her enter the data. It doesn't mean we-
It's not so much the process, mentioning the data, it's also, it's also the record keeping of it in the balance, that is the huge part of it. It's not just the entering and the input.
Well, the balancing is, is up to our accountant as is, it's up to, if she has an issue of balancing, that's up to Jean to find it, is it not?
I would like to match the GL with the collection side on a monthly basis. And I think that Vadar systems would help us do that very easily.
Well, I would think on a monthly basis that, that Jean is making sure our books do balance. That, that's her job.
You can only do it when they, she gets the information from the treasurer's office time. Right. Right now, part of the issue with that is- Right now, part of the issue with that isn't just manpower, but it also comes down to using two different softwares limits the use of Vadar by the treasurer because they don't have the counterpart using the other side of the software. We add more work to the treasurer's office by maintaining two separate software systems.
If the batch reports are handed to the accountant, they were not adding to the work of the treasurer.
There's a lot more to it than just those couple steps, I'm talking about the other things that Alex was bringing up. Greater amounts of reports that can be produced when you have a complete system being used. Various things where you can actually create a much clearer audit trail of things, it's just right now. This is, the idea of it's working is not an accurate description. We're getting by. It's not really working. And I just think we need to evaluate that, and if you really need to better understand what the software does, we probably should ask the representative for Vadar if they're willing to come in and actually explain to us the benefits it can provide, the types of reports it can provide, maybe even provide samples of the reports. So if Jean looks at it, she says, "What am I missing?" Or she's like, "I didn't know that report could be provided and here's the reason why," and it could be kind of like what Alex was saying is, they had to customize and slimline the software because of the way it would be used.
Matt, I, I understand the benefits, um, to the software as it being presented, don't, don't get me wrong. But what I'm talking about is immediately right now, today, tomorrow, we're not fixing anything or changing anything with software. We have a backlog of work in the treasurer collector office. We have the accountant wanting a few more hours and willing to take these reports and that portion off their plate at the same time. I would suggest we put that portion on Jean's plate, authorize these extra hours, and we continue to look into this software. And, you know, this is gonna be one more step in the process to, to show whether we do, do not need to go towards the software. But, but I, I think for the immediate time being, if, if we have these batch reports presented to Jean and let Jean enter those, that's gonna take, um, some of the burden off of the, um, treasurer collector that they're now still trying to catch up from. And, and it's gonna allow Jean to enter them the way she wants to for right now and hopefully stabilize things, and, and we can, as we said, look further into this and address this down the road, but I'm talking until we've done that, I'd like to do something right now to, to, to change what's going on a little bit. And that is, let the accountant enter those batch reports herself. That, it's, it's a simple change, it's not, it's, it's not denying the software. Pardon?
I do propose approving in February a change into the budget of the money spent by the accountant to accomplish work versus the treasurer.
Well, I don't know.
Anything until, what is it, May, Jean?
Yeah, I don't.
Not allowed by the new municipal rules to, uh, make transfers from one item to the other. The board can't do that until, I thought it was May.
Right.
So, but we don't have the authority to approve more hours for her.
Well, my only thought there would be is.
In the annual town meeting.
My only thought there is if, if a portion of these hours are as indicated because of the CARES Act or COVID Acts, um, that we should be able to keep track of those expenses. Let them be over, overtures and, and, you know, as the state had given us before the opportunity for these expenses for COVID and CARES, we could run them in a deficit and pay them off over years if we had to. And if we need to add hours because of this CARES Act and COVID is doing to us, we have the authority to go ahead, I believe, and add those hours and let the deficit run. Either the state or the federal government may reimburse us for those later, or we can pay them off over years a- as it affects our budget, unless, unless it's changed what they did, um, at the fiscal year end. Because you recall, they said we, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, can we get a financial layout to show that that's something that we have the funds for and we can approve through the CARES Act? I wouldn't wanna make a decision up without that.
I, and then that's, and that's the only reason I'd say we could propose it, because certainly we can't just fart out more money, it doesn't exist. But i- if it is applicable because of the, what I, what I heard was because of the CARES Act, because of the COVID, because that's a thing she has to trace and thing she has to do and account for, and we certainly know that, you know, that was allowed before, I would think there's an exception for us to do it. And if there is, great, if there's not, then we, we really, it's impossible, we can't consider it. We can't just create more money right now. Even when we, um, and, and I'll say so Jean understands, when we, um, came up with the new position of assistant treasurer collector and we did a, a, a salary increase in that position, we intentionally held it off for a couple of months to make sure that the offset in salary for the remainder of the year would be covered by the lack of salary paid out for those couple of months. Um, we didn't just create new money in that case either, we, we had to make sure we covered it in a different fashion. So obviously, yes, we can't just approve money and hours without having a place, a part that it's gonna come out of, but I don't think we have that part. It needs to be looked at by the finance committee, and, um, we need to, um, reference it against, uh, CARES Act spending. We did hold some CARES Act money aside, not a lot, possibly could go towards this, um, and, and make that, that happen, but.
Yeah, I guess my one word of caution, so I know that, you know, Jean, the board of health, for example, the police department, fire department, they've all been using CARES Act money for payroll expenses. But we just have to be careful because that, you know, we need to be able to justify and say that it was due to COVID that these extra hours were needed, and so Jean does use those extra, you know, those funds for the time that she spends on COVID-related expenses. So it's already something that's in use, and I don't know if, you know, we could justify using those, that funds for this purpose without potentially getting, you know, if we're ever audited or, you know.
Right, well, and it sounds like a lot of it's because, because she's doing more work from home, she's not able to come into the office, but that's, given the age groups and, and, you know, the recommendations of COVID, she's perfectly reasonable to be expected to be working from home more often than not because of those concerns, and especially, um, by, by age group, the risks are different for everybody. And I think because of that, that, and certainly the restrictions set by the government on us, I certainly think it's reasonable for her to stay at home for as much as she has, come in Fridays and there's less people here and do the things she's doing. And because of that, I think it's more likely to be approvable through the CARES Act money. You know, and that's a backlog we've created, but we don't know until we ask. And if, if it's approvable, I'd say we approve the hours and we shift the batches to her for now until we can figure out what we're gonna do with the software definitively. And I understand the benefits of the software, um, but, you know, I wanna be able to sit down sometime in a room with, with somebody from Vadar and Jean and Alex, and we all look at this, you know, intelligently together instead of, you know, three different phone calls on cameras and, and, and trying to backtalk. We're not looking at data, we're not looking at graphs, we're not physically seeing what has to be entered. Um, we're not seeing the reports or, or simulated reports that we're talking about, the benefits that we gain from this. You know, without having a visual on, on what the benefits are, what the costs are, um, and what the concerns are, it's very difficult to make these decisions in the manner that we're meeting right now. So, you know, if, if we can approve the hours because it's available, which we have to discover before our next meeting hopefully, um, then I would recommend if we approve the hours, we let, um, Jean, um, take the batches and enter them herself. And if we can't approve the hours, then we're gonna have to keep it business as usual for now and, and figure out when we can sit down and have a better discussion about this software.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would you chime in here? I got a message from, uh, from Claire. Uh, her computer is dead, so she's not able to stay on the Zoom with us, but she did tell me just now that FinCom voted for Jean to keep using her software. Uh, they also voted to keep, to give Jean a raise and add hours and put that in the budget for FY22.
Right, so that will be next year, but it doesn't take care of this year that we're talking about, but thank you. Do we have two chats up there? You can read the chat windows, Jessica, see what we have.
It said the same thing.
It's just the same thing, okay. Um, so basically, we're not gonna get anywhere until we have an answer on the CARES Act if we can do anything for funding for this year. Certainly can be considered in the budget for next year. But I, I really don't see us taking any real action on this tonight, we're not gonna demand a software change tonight. I certainly wouldn't be comfortable with it. Whether it's wise to pass up these, these batch reports now with her, you know, being behind on hours, I don't know if that's smart either. Now, now, Alex, how are we looking?
I would like to say, now that I do have a new employee, uh, my time will be focused, uh, more on this issue. So I will be working diligently to get that on track, um, especially now that the, yeah, the second, uh, sorry, the third quarter is over. So that also relieves a lot of stress from the office, January is usually a very, very busy month. So going forward, um, especially with the new employee.
Can you be caught up by the end of February?
What's that?
Can you be caught up with these batch reports by the end of February?
Um, one week?
Two, yep, week and a half.
Two, or the batch reports, yes.
So if we, if we.
Batch reports, the batch reports can be caught up very quickly.
And, and, and Tilda, do we need to have Jean enter those?
No, no, I couldn't, I, those can be entered by Jeanne.
All right.
The batch reports, as far as I'm concerned, the only thing that, that has been entered is, uh, February, I believe. January's been entered in. Uh, I believe it's the cash book that she is referring to that has gone back a little further than needed. Uh, well, not needed, but, you know, that has gone back a little further. And all that is, is entering into an actual sales bridge, uh, it's being entered into software.
Okay. It, it sounds like, um, you know, this is just a, a timely issue right here um, for the lack of, um, support in the office in the last couple of months, we, we knew we were heading into that. So I ask everyone to try to be patient and try to work with each other. We are trying to hear everyone's points of view, and there's nothing personal in any of these decisions we make. I do want my accountant to be happy with the software that she has, but I also do want our, our, our books and things to make sense and make sense to auditors as we do it, and we will do that decision in the future, not, not tonight. But if it is easier to have Jean enter some of those, uh, batch numbers herself, um, you know, I think you guys can talk with each other as department heads and with Jessica and, and figure out, um, how you might try doing some of that. Is that all right with you guys?
That is okay.
Okay, Matt and Dylan won't do anything further yet until we get some more information till we can get everyone together and get some sort of cognitive reporting on this to, to see really, we need, you know, Alex's point of view and why he wants it, and maybe, maybe something in writing from Alex, a report, and a report and writing from Jean, and then we can take those to a Vadar personnel and, and address, address them in a manner that we can get a, you know, a comprehensive, um, display or something that we can look at and make a decision on.
Yeah, we don't need to, we don't need to make a decision today, um, so I think that does make sense that we keep using, uh, what works for now and we get the information that we need to make a decision about, uh, a switch to Vadar across the board. If we decide to do that, if we don't, we don't, but we can't make a decision right now, so that relieves us to get that info from someone who works at Vadar and maybe, uh, Alex and Jean can, uh, stay in touch through Jessica's office and she can plug us into, uh, someone from Vadar.
Okay.
However, that, however that works specifically, it's up to, uh, Jessica, I think, maybe to thread that needle, but that makes sense to me.
And to, to spin back to the original agenda item, it was a discussion for the added accountant. I was for FY22 specifically, it wasn't for this year, it was for FY22. You know, so i- if there is time available through CARES Act that we can do something this year to catch up, great, and we'll look into that. Um, but we already have the input from, from the finance committee in their opinion, so as Jessica's, uh, beginning the budget process here with the finance committee, um, that's certainly something they'll probably be entertained, and we'll see where it plays out as, as a budget is drawn up and takes shape. Um, everybody ready to move on from that? Do we have anything else you wanna say, Matt, before we move, or?
Just, uh, so I better understand what you're saying when it comes to the specific agenda item, discussion regarding FY22 proposed hours increased for the accountant and assistant accountant.
Right.
Is that increase due to the increased workload in COVID, Jean?
For next year?
Yes.
FY22, pro- proposed hours, that's on our agenda.
Yeah.
What are those hours requested for?
Uh, well, some of this for computerizing the fixed assets, which was on the audit report um, that we haven't gotten to because of COVID. Um, some of it is to attend finance meetings, because I think the finance committee really wants me to be there. Um, I hadn't, I'd done that before since I, um, when, when I've been there. Um, I started doing it with Heather, with Heather Monroe, because she was interim, and, um, they would like me to do that, so I'd like to be more involved with them. And who else is in there?
It was a five-hour increase for you and I believe a 10-hour increase on the assistant. Oh, five, five in each.
Five in each.
Now, the reason I ask is I'm just, you know, until COVID hit, we never used a full allotment that we had already given to the assistant.
Well, I have a new employee, a new employee, we've been training her, so she, you know, I mean, from scratch. So that's part of the reason.
All right, that's enough for now, I mean, obviously, we'll continue and we'll see where it plays out. I appreciate the information, Jean, I just wanted to get a better idea. I understand the fixed assets is another work that wasn't, obviously it wasn't something we were doing, so.
No, it wasn't something that was that we touched into, no.
And I'm sure, I'm sure we'll get back to this as the budget season progresses. You know, we'll find out if those hours are reasonable, if they have to be trimmed a little bit or, or, or what, but we won't know for probably another month or so when we start to get, uh, the first round of numbers in. All right, if we move on, next is, uh, discussion of financial software, we kinda bundled that into that one. That was, the whole topic is covered what we've done, so we'll, we'll pass off that and go to our COVID update, please, Jessica.
Sure, so, um, you guys, you know, we've been posting updates through the Facebook page on how many cases are active, um, in town, and so for this week and the previous week, that has not been done because our, um, public health nurse, who is the one that, um, produces those reports, she has been all consumed with the towns that she works for on vaccine administration. So I think, you know, we, we still need to be mindful that there are still high cases, case numbers in the state. They have taken a slight dip since vaccines have become more available. Um, but, you know, we're, we're now kind of looking towards putting our resources in just vaccine administration. And so that's really why that report hasn't been, um, made in the past two weeks is just because she's really busy working with, uh, a number of towns. She doesn't just work for Barry, she works for a number of different towns on vaccine administration. So, you know, I think we're in a, a contentious and exciting time with the vaccine being administered. Uh, I made my report a couple of weeks ago to the board on how the vaccine rollout in the state was just, just has not been fair to small communities, it really hasn't been fair to communities at large. Um, and there's been a lot of criticism on how that rollout has gone. Um, and I think that, you know, in, in Barry, I think, as town staff, the board of health, the, um, you know, fire department, we all feel that pain, um, and, you know, we can relate that the residents are frustrated with not knowing necessarily when they're gonna be able to get that vaccine. Uh, so we definitely share those frustrations with everybody and hope that within the next couple of weeks, we really don't know what, you know, the state holds for us. It's gonna depend on if supply goes up, you know, if the federal government increases the allocation for the state, but the state has also made statements about moving more vaccines to the mass vaccination sites, so. even that, you know, takes a larger percentage away from small communities like Barry and they, you know, direct them to Gillette or Fenway or, or one of those mass vaccination sites. And we're still extremely limited on the number of vaccines that small communities can get individually. And so the two orders that our Board of Health has placed have not been approved by the state. And again, that goes back to, you know, there wasn't anything wrong with what the, you know, what Andrea was submitting. It was just that the state is prioritizing other avenues to get these vaccines, including hospitals and mass vaccination sites, and that's just what the trend looks like right now. I don't know what's gonna happen in the next couple of weeks. And so tomorrow, we're having our second clinic. The first clinic was held last week at the Grandview Terrace Apartments. And it's really encouraging because it's been such a tough time for vaccine rollout. It was really encouraging. I've heard a lot of positive comments. I know I shared some with the Select Board. I've heard so much positivity come out of that one vaccine, small vaccine clinic that we did for the residents up at Grandview, where they went door to door in that apartment complex administering the vaccine to the residents who, who wanted it. So we have our second vaccine clinic tomorrow, which is gonna look more like a, you know, traditional vaccine clinic where at the post, you know, the Legion post location, we have appointments already filled by residents who are 75 and older to get their vaccine tomorrow. I believe the number was around 167 appointments that were made. So we're really looking forward to that tomorrow. I know that the Chief Rodowski and Andrea from the Board of Health, they were both down there today setting up the site. They have a really good model going, so I'm looking forward to going down there tomorrow and reporting back to the board on how that goes. But I'm sure with the preparation that they've made, that it'll go up flawlessly like it did last week.
How many doses of the vaccine have it received in town to, to give out?
So the Rutland Board of Health was able to give us 200 Pfizer vaccines. That, that was what we were able to basically open appointments for, and so I think when I checked in today, there was 167 appointments that were, were made. So that's what-
The ballots were used at Grandview already?
So so what was used at Grandview was a different allotment that we got from Rutland. So this was, this 200 was just specifically for the 75-plus that we were gonna address tomorrow. And they've already, and since we have to use a Pfizer vaccine for them, you know, they've already promised us to match whatever we use tomorrow in the next round of vaccine distribution for that, that group of residents that have to come back for their second dose. So we're really lucky that we have Rutland as a partner here, that they've been really willing to work with us. And I know that there was a lot of discussion about this at the last meeting and really, you know, what, what we were really trying to do was keep it in-house as much as possible and say like, you know, Barry, if we can get our own resources, that's the most ideal way, instead of trying to reach into another community's allocation that they could use for their own residents. But luckily, you know, Rutland's able to house more vaccines than we are able to, and so that's why they have the Pfizer vaccine that they were able to share with us. And, you know, we're grateful for that partnership.
I believe, didn't, I think Rutland was, was acquiring, part of how they acquired the vaccines is representing a dozen to 13 communities, and they were getting vaccines in the state based on that sort of hub scenario, that they should be sending them off to Barry and things. I, I think they received, I think that they've received them for that, and that's part of their wisdom is, is representing 13 communities. They were able to get attention from the state to get them out there is probably why it worked.
I, I think that, you know, the big reason was because they were able to house Pfizer. And there's more, since fewer places can house the Pfizer vaccine, they're, you know, it, they were able to get more vaccine just from that, and I think that's the biggest push, because I know that there's other communities that are in regional settings like that too, and they're still only able to get like 100 vaccines a week. And they're in region, regions with 10 or 13 towns also. So I've seen it, you know, happen both ways, so I think in Rutland's case, they were able to give us the vaccine because they have access to Pfizer. That's just my, my thoughts on it, but again, it's, it's a frustrating time with this rollout, and we can only hope that within the next couple of weeks, as we expand the population who's eligible to get the vaccine, that the federal government ramps up the distribution and that the state is more fair in distributing the vaccine. I've, I've also heard reports that, you know, Massachusetts is towards the bottom on the vaccines that the state has been given, on how many have actually been administered so far. I think it was hovering somewhere around 64%. And so, you know, there's just a whole slew of issues outside of the town of Barry that we can't, you know, even begin to wrap our head around on why this, why we're in the situation that we're in.
Well, thank you.
Matt, how does that sound?
Matt?
Yeah, it was just, um, two things. The police department had posted something about tomorrow's vaccination program at the American Legion. But it didn't provide information on how to see if you can get on the list or how can you set an appointment? And nothing against the police department, don't get me wrong, it's not even, at, at most, it was just a favor of trying to get people aware of something. But where would people go if they wanna know if our town is running a vaccination clinic? How do they get an appointment? How, where do they look? Like, some of us didn't even know that there's a clinic going on tomorrow until I saw it on Facebook, so is there a particular Facebook page or website or something that if somebody checked daily, they're gonna get the the information about a local clinic here in town that's going on?
So the best way to find that information out, or the best way to get information on how to register for a clinic would be to contact Andrea from the Board of Health Office. She's the one that has been, you know, her, between her and Eileen at the Senior Center, they've been fielding the phone calls from residents and they've been signing people up because I, I think, as I talked about last time, the rollout of the signup to get the vaccine for 75-year-olds and up was exclusively an online application, which is incredibly difficult for people who are 75 and older for the most part. You know, a lot of them don't have computers or smartphones or anything of the like. So I know that they've been working really hard with trying to get people signed up through, over the phone. And just, you know, providing the link to people who request it. And the reason why the link wasn't just posted everywhere is to minimize people from just signing up who aren't eligible for it right now. So, you know, for example, if we posted it on Facebook and 25, 40-year-olds sign up for the vaccine, because there's no, there's no way to vet those before they're submitted. So if, you know, a whole bunch of residents who are not in the age group, which likely, they're unlikely to be online again, sign up for it, then that creates a whole other time suck for Andrea, because then she has to go through and vet every single person who's signed up for it. So I know that they do have a list from the town clerk's office of every resident who is, you know, eligible in this stage, and they have been making, you know, the effort of contacting each one of those residents if they don't already contact them to begin with, if that makes sense.
It does.
So Board of Health?
Assuming that our residents actually haven't moved in recently and therefore aren't on the town clerk's rolls.
Right. Well, it's not a perfect system, for sure.
No, I understand that, but I guess the next question I have on that, and we've also seen other towns publicly come out, at least I've noticed, I think at, um, Malden is one of them, where you're not just offering the vaccine to somebody 75 and over, you're willing to also vaccinate the person that's willing to drive them to the vaccination site?
Correct.
Is that something that is a municipal decision? It sounded like Malden made that decision on their own. And it assisted in getting the 75 and older to the vaccination site by saying, "I don't even care if you don't live in Malden. If you're willing to come to Malden to pick up a 75-year-old and bring him to the vaccination site, we'll vaccinate you as well."
Correct. So that was-
I'm just curious where our town and our Board of Health stands on that and what their thoughts are.
Yes. So that decision was actually made by the state, like, I wanna say it was last Friday or last Thursday afternoon to include companions and caregivers to the elderly, which it is just a very untimely decision by the state because, you know, we had already, we were already about to close the admission process for this upcoming round of vaccines. So that is definitely a statewide decision that was made. Again, you know, there's been a lot of criticism on that because there's been so, it's been such a fluid situation where now, now the next phase will probably have to get pushed back, or you'll have, you know, if you only have 200 vaccines and 175-year-olds bring a companion, then there's 100 other 75-year-olds that are not gonna be able to get the vaccine. And then there's just been a lot of, you know, a lot of reports across the state of people trying to take advantage of elderly people by offering them money to allow them to take them to these vaccine sites and allow them to make those appointments. So I think there's been a lot of criticism on that end too, but for the most part, the way that, so the state's decision on that was that the caregiver has to get the vaccine at the same appointment time as the person that they're bringing. So we have all of these appointments already made and they're made, you know, five or 10 minutes next to each other. And so there's no room for additional vaccine appointments within that timeframe, because they're, they're already been taken up by somebody else. So for this vaccine clinic, that's not something we advertise because we just don't have the capacity for it to, to be fair to everybody who's 75 or older, but that's definitely something that we, we will incorporate into the next round.
Alright, well, thank you.
Alright. Anything else, Dylan or Matt, you wanna have on the COVID update before we move on?
I put in, I put in the chat a link to a website. It's macovivaccines.com. And somebody was, apparently somebody was frustrated with the lack of clarity with the state system or other, other mask websites, and they sort of compiled all of this data and put it, put it into this simple website so people can look up where and when and if they're eligible to make appointments at various sites across the state. So that might be a helpful tool for people to use, macovivaccines.com.
Excellent. So one question I get from family members everywhere and, and friends, "How do you sign up?" And I just keep saying, "Ask your Board of Health," is all I tell them. That, I think that's your best resource in most, most towns, but yeah, for the mass vaccination sites and things.
And there's also been an interesting phenomenon that's happened in, in conjunction with people trying to, you know, take advantage of the elderly to try and get their companion vaccine. There's been a vaccine tourism thing that's been going on, where people will literally go from site to site to try and see if they can get an extra vaccine at the end of the day. So I think that's another interesting phenomenon that's been happening around the country, where people will literally travel to different states just to get a vaccine.
All good. We have no-
Is there a 211 number as well?
Uh, yeah.
Isn't there a hotline?
Yeah, so the 211 number, I think, if I remember correctly what Andrea had said about that, is that the Barry site, since it's being held exclusively to Barry residents, I don't think, if somebody were to call 211, I don't think that Barry would come up as a place for them to get the vaccine. If I, again, if I understood Andrea correctly, I think that that's the issue with that, is that we can't say, "Okay, call 211," but if, you know, when they give you the list of places to get the vaccine, I don't think Barry will come up as a, as a place.
No, and I think that's, look, am I due it again?
Nope, nope, you're on.
I think that some of the concerns people in town are getting is not everybody knows if the clerk or the Board of Health has their info. And then when they see something on Facebook saying there's gonna be a clinic in town tomorrow, they're like, "Well, I don't even know what to do. Like, why wasn't I on the list, or how come I don't know, or who do I go to to make sure my name's on the list there? Just in case, like, would it be best for them to try to contact the clerk's office so they can just take names and just verify, this is information, someone says they're in this classification, and it just goes on the list that the Board of Health will then try to use to reach out to people when filling positions? Because I do understand the concern with putting it on Facebook or something, like you said, you could get someone from New Hampshire trying to say that they're a local resident. So.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. If residents wanna contact the town clerk and make sure that they're on the list, and this goes for people, you know, any resident that may, because we're using the entire database that includes residents of all ages to make sure that, you know, that, that at some point down the line, we get in contact with them to let them know that they're eligible for a vaccine. But I know that on the town page, I'm looking at it now, there was a post saying, you know, registration for COVID-19 vaccine is, you know, for Barry residents who qualify. You know, call, either call the Senior Center or the Board of Health, and they will supply you with the proper, you know, way to get signed up for the vaccine, and that showed that it reached 3,000 people. So, you know, that information is out there, and again, and we don't have a perfect system. We don't necessarily have the capacity to make this a perfect system. But we are, you know, trying our best to make sure that no resident gets left behind. And, and if you know of any residents or whoever at any time, just like send them my way, you know, we're, we take calls every day.
Good. And that was more the reason I asked, just like if someone asks, should I say, "Contact the Board of Health," or are they really gonna be so busy trying to set same things up? They shouldn't be the person receiving the call to say, "Put me on the list for a future date." In other words, would it be better to siphon it through the town administrator or the clerk's office so that their name just gets on the list while the Board of Health and the Senior Center is actually taking that list and trying to get people lined up for appointments?
Um, I, you know, I think that any sort of combination would work, whoever they decided to get in contact with, but, you know, it may take a day or two for them to get back, for sure. But I know that, you know, especially I know that Andrea has been working all week, on the weekends, you know, trying to get things in order, so, yeah, just whatever office somebody can get in touch with, that works too.
Alright, thank you. I just, the more accurate information I could give someone, I'd rather do that, especially not just direct them to somebody that's already overworked if I can help. Thank you.
Alright, moving on. Approval of meeting minutes for February 1st and executive session from the same date. Looking for a motion.
I went over it, so I'll take a, or I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 1st, 2021.
minutes of February first, 2021. And executive session meeting minutes for February, uh, for the same date.
I'll second those, so we have a motion to second for the, uh, approval and release of the minutes for February first, regular meeting and approval but not release for the executive session for February first. Any further discussion on those? Hearing nonis, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, and Matt, you're muted.
Dylan Clark, yes.
Matt Irvin, yes.
And Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Reports, we have no correspondence, correct?
Nope.
Select Board reports, I have nothing in particular, um, this week. Any reports you guys want to bring up?
I'll pass this one.
All right, Administrator report, Jessica, anything further to add, you've already gone through?
Yeah, I do, um, actually have, um, some updates. So, we just mentioned we didn't have any correspondence, but I did receive a late letter, um, Thursday afternoon from Q Drug. They're having their purple prevention week as they do every year, and so they just wanted to, uh, make sure that they still have the town's blessing to decorate the town common. Uh, my understanding is that they do like a lot of purple ribbons around the area in purple lights, so, um, I just wanted to bring that up to your attention. Um, on February eleventh, we had a meeting at the fire station for the RFQ for the feasibility study. Um, we had three, uh, companies show up with, with interest in submitting a, um, a bid for that. The bids are due on Thursday at 2:00 PM, um, so I just wanted to keep everybody apprised on the status of that project. Um, we had ordered tents recently for, with the CARES Act. Hopefully, we're gonna have those tents by the end of the month. Um, I, it was a pretty wide window on when they would be delivered, but I think by the end of this month or at the latest mid-March, we should have these tents, which would be, um, exciting. And given the recent weather, I almost think of, I don't know if I want the tents delivered right now, but we definitely will need them for the spring, for the spring months with, um, the vaccine distribution. Um, we already talked about the vaccine clinic, and that's tomorrow. Um, we have, at the Senior Center, the issue that we had with the water break, we have the restoration team, um, that finished up their work today. Um, uh, they had to take out a wall, um, that was the biggest loss that we had. Luckily, uh, I don't think we're gonna need to replace any carpet or other flooring. Um, we also lost some ceiling tiles and some insulation up there, um, which is unfortunate, but it could have been a lot worse. And we have a rebuilding team who will meet with me on Monday to develop a game plan on, um, you know, the, what the timeline's gonna look like for fixing up the wall and the insulation and the ceiling tiles. Um, I just want to keep everybody apprised on what I've done recently in relation to cable access. Um, I spoke with the Greater Gardner Chamber of Commerce about helping facilitate a regional dialogue with, with some of the other small towns in the, um, in the chamber on, you know, increasing internet access. I've really been, I've really been trying to focus on, you know, the internet aspect of it, whether that means going through charter, whether that means, um, having a discussion about some kind of municipal broadband opportunity. There's also a new grant through the state that's a small rural town grant that can be used for infrastructure projects. I'm really excited about this grant. Um, it could, you know, I, I thought of cable access, but then I also heard that it could be used on like water pipes and some underground infrastructure, so those are definitely conversations I want to have with Jason as well, because I think that this grant has a really wide range of possibilities, um, on some things that the town can really take advantage of. So, I'm looking forward to, um, going through the process of applying for, for that grant, for whatever the purpose ends up being. Um, and the last update that I want to make is that Eileen, in our assessor's office, she is retiring at the end of this month, um, after, like, almost forty years of service to the town, um, which is incredibly impressive, you know, for anybody to say that they've, you know, basically worked their entire career, um, here. Unfortunately, she's been incredibly resistant to having, um, a party as much as we've been trying to impress that upon her, like, we want, you know, to celebrate her, but, um, with COVID, it's just too much of a risk for a lot of the employees to have that kind of gathering, so we might just do a small cake, um, and, you know, celebrate her successes here for, for such a long period of time. Uh, with that being said, we're now looking for a new assessor, and it's been incredibly challenging. Uh, every town will recognize that getting a new assessor right now is, is just, there's not a market for them. Um, it's kind of a, a profession that not a lot of people are, know about, not a lot of people are going into. Um, so, we've only gotten one application for this position so far, and after talking with Rob LaRue, who is the, um, on, on the Board of Assessors, and he's also a, an assessor himself, uh, he would suggest adjusting the salary offer. So, right now, the salary is at the lowest, um, entry level offer that we're able to give, and so he is looking for the board's blessing to consider, um, you know, offering a greater range of a salary for this position. And then the other piece of that is that when Eileen leaves, it's very unlikely that we're going to have a replacement, and so Rob also, again, he, his, his profession, he's been working as an assessor in Palmer for many years, um, he's offering to help keep the office afloat until replacement can be found by working, um, you know, fielding calls during the week and, you know, coming into the office on the weekends for that. And that's my, uh, update.
Well, that's going to be fun. Back to the beginning, make a, anyone want to make a formal motion just to, uh, support the, um, the purple effort in town? With the, um-
Okay, well, remind me of the dates?
Yeah, it's March first through March sixth.
Okay, and they're dressing it up on March first or the day before?
Uh, let me see what day of the week March first is. I think they're doing it on a weekend, so if it's not March first, it's the weekend before. So, March first is a-
March first is a Monday.
Monday, okay. So, um, they have the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth, they'll probably be decorating the common.
So, see if you guys want to make an official support for Q Drug for this effort as, as we normally do and just, um...
I would, yeah, I'd make a motion out the Board of Selecting to support Q Drug in decorating the town. They generally, uh, focus on the three main commons. You got Berry Plains, um, Norey Park, and, uh, up here, um, Common Uptown. Um, then, various people dress up their own houses. Um, I've seen people wrap a tree that's along the street or they got, you know, so yes, I would encourage, uh, dressing the town up in, uh, purple for that first week in March.
I will second that motion.
So, we have a motion to second to support Q Drug and encourage people to participate in decorating in purple for that week in March. If any further discussion? Hearing nonis, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Matt Irvin, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
And Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Um, as for other issues, um, how long have we posted for already for the, um, to, to fill the assess's position?
I wouldn't say, it's been two or three weeks now.
Wow, just, just one. Um, you've advertised all the traditional government sites and everything else?
Every, um, you know, in all of the public buildings and on all of the websites, um, that we, you know, know that this market would go to, it's all posted.
And what's the salary range at that right now for that position?
Um, it's, uh, I don't know. The, the starting salary would be forty-six thousand eight hundred to forty-eight thousand two hundred, depending on the person's education.
And how's that sit surrounding communities, any idea? Have you looked at that or not yet?
Um, I haven't really listened to it much. Rob argues that it's incredibly low, um, so, I mean, I would take his word for it. I know that he's been in the market for a while.
Is that a thirty-seven hour week, thirty-two, forty? How do we work, what is that?
Thirty-five plus.
Do you recall if she was a five-day at work? Now, Eileen probably was-
No.
Probably worked more than she charged us.
Oh, she absolutely did. But it is a, uh, you know, Monday through Thursday, like every other, um-
Okay.
Well, we certainly can't make any big moves on that and talk about salary until we get talking in the budget season with finance on it and see what we wind up with, um, if anyone else applies and what we have for an applicant, we, you know, interview them or talk to them.
Yeah. So, I mean, if we're looking to repost the application, um, maybe instead of posting a salary range, we could post like the, depending on qualifications or to be negotiated, um...
It might be wiser and see if we get more input that way and see, give us an idea if we have to move a salary, where we have to move it to, what they're looking for.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I just hate to jump on the single applicant and take it without trying to open up the field a little more first. Um, you guys agree, or do you want to look harder at the one applicant we do have?
I don't believe it's something we should rush into. Um, it's a, it's a very critical person for, uh, role in our town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think we were lucky with the experience that Eileen had over her time and what she could provide for the town. We want to make sure you can bring someone in because there's not a lot of support outside of the Board of Assessors themselves. Now, Bill, get me your arm, I mean, we have other departments at work, but when it comes to someone coming in and saying, "What's the assessor's department's job and what are my deadlines?" You want someone coming in that knows them, that doesn't have to be taught them.
I agree. Um, so let's, let's maybe re-advertise and, you know, salary dependent upon experience and, and such, rather than list a range, and, and see what we have for applicants and, and give us something to pick through and, and pick from, rather than just having to, to take what we have for the one applicant. Be tough shoes to fill, very tough shoes to fill.
Yeah, and that's why Rob was so adamant on, um, you know, he was, he's very committed to helping the town because he's like, I couldn't watch, you know, forty years of her work be, you know, negated essentially for over the next couple of, or neglected, I should say, over the next couple of weeks, just because, you know, the other two people in the office who are important, you know, to the operations, they just don't have the understanding of the work that, you know, is required to kind of keep the office afloat. And so, I think we're really lucky to have somebody like Rob in, in the community who's willing, who's already on the Board of Assessors, and he's willing to kind of use his expertise within his own community.
We are very fortunate, and we certainly appreciate that effort. We're gonna need it. Anything else, um, you guys want to talk about before we move to executive session? Nope? All right, with that, I make a motion, we move to executive session, Court of Master under law, Chapter thirty, uh, Section twenty-one A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for the police union, and we will come out of executive session strictly to adjourn.
Second.
A motion to second to go to executive session, any further discussion? Hearing nonis, I'll call for a vote, roll call please, gentlemen?
Dylan Clark, yes.
Matt Irvin, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes.